If being six thirty on this meeting with the Select Board of Manchester by the Sea to order, um, Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy here. Anne is here. Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we now take public comments on our agenda items.
Do you want to mention it's being recorded?
This is recording.
Uh, all right. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Please.
Fine, my work here is done.
Are there any comments from people present or people on the?
Uh, Sarah Pierce.
Sarah Pierce, okay. Sarah, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, Sarah Pierce and I, Front Street. I just have a question about, um, we had a power outage Friday and we do tend to get power outages more, I don't, I can't say more than, I don't know what happens throughout the rest of the town. But, um, I was also reading an article and just had a question. Bruce Tar, about exactly a year ago, had written about Cape Ann's electrical capacity and it said, "Right now, the grid will not support the expansion," referring to cell signaling coming to Manchester. Um... Moving our headquarters here, it's basically a question of capacity. How much do we have? That was a year ago, prior to cell signaling getting permitted, of course. So, I'm just wondering, has anything been done to address the lack of capacity to support? And what, what will change or how will that get addressed? Just for residents, how will that impact us? I was told by National Grid that the grid that actually serves our street is in New Hampshire. Um, I don't know much more than that, but I'm just wondering if you could answer the capacity piece with adding a large company and also, you know, other building projects that could be in the works.
So I can take a stab at that. Um, so, the grid has assured both the town and CST, there is sufficient capacity to serve their Phase One in most of Phase Two. Um, beyond that, there would have to be some additions or upgrades to, to the main feeder that comes into town. That also feeds all of Cape Ann. Um, so, for, for Phase One, there is, there is sufficient capacity in addition to, um, regular household expansions, new housing, et cetera. Um, we had a meeting with National Grid a couple of weeks ago with their, um, with their planners and their long-term capital planning. Um, they have a number of projects that they hope to, um, get in the queue for, for Cape Ann to help with, um, with the residency or the capacity of the grid. But that is something that is ongoing. Um, they did assure us that there is sufficient capacity to meet the needs over the next five years.
Okay, so, what is the, does Manchester have a specific plan for our town? Or that's just Cape Ann as a whole and I don't know when the, excuse me, when the, um, these phases are ending or starting or how long it would take and to upgrade that?
So, this is something that National Grid is responsible for. As a monopoly, they are required to provide service to the community and have sufficient capacity to do so.
Okay, so, when is, I don't, how does the phasing work with CST? That's Phase One is supposed to be finished by?
By twenty-seven?
Twenty-twenty-seven? And they're saying it's enough capacity electric-wise to support what we, what we have in place now?
Right, nor, normal growth and, and also CST's additional, uh, needs.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to ask that with the concern that the Senator had with the company coming here and also just the multiple power outages that we've had, so, thank you.
Yeah, we, just to finish up, we continue to work with, uh, both the Senator and, and Representative Farante on, um, on our work with, with National Grid and the DPU as well.
Thank you. There any other? Um... On the Chairman's report, um, I had a conversation with Steve Yang and also with Keri Morse of Trees who asked us to consider whether it makes sense for tree hearings to be moved from, um, Select Board to the, um, to... In a, at our last hearing, we needed clarification about property lines and so on, that the conservation division already had. Um, I'm not asking for any action on this right now, just, uh, my feeling is that the parts of the tree policy are overly broad and I'd like to see the policy brought in a little closer. Greg mentioned that the parts of it make perfectly good sense as long as you're inside the heater. Um, and, but when you get outside where there aren't sidewalks and there aren't curves, it gets confusing. And my particular concern is, um, the definition of a heritage tree, which is any tree that's thirty inches in diameter or a half feet above the ground, um... Anywhere on anybody's property, um, that would require permission to remove any such and without people knowing that they have heritage trees, I don't see how they're going to remember about that. Having taken down two recently myself, which were dead, and I think, I think there's an exception. So, what I'm asking is to consider whether it makes sense to move the tree hearings and, um, would it make sense to put together a group including, um, Chuck, Jody, one of us, to go over the, um, tree policy and, um, narrow the scope?
Yeah. I think that makes perfect sense. I think, um, it makes sense to refine the policy first perhaps and then hand it off to CONCOM, uh, but have someone from them represented on the small committee?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Okay.
We had, uh, talked about this over a year ago, as far as moving, uh, moving the, uh, tree hearings off Select Board's plate, so I think, uh, we've already started. I think some of us have already contemplated this.
Okay. Um... Hold on, that, um, our next, um, discussion is about action items? Are there, um, action, any new action items that you should, we should probably put in something outside of that, that should move.
Just a question, did we, um, at our last meeting, we talked about having a joint meeting with FINCOM on the budget in February and, has that been set up yet? Cause I don't recall here in that.
It hasn't been set up yet, no. So we talked about with them on the meeting this once.
Okay, so you'll, you'll take care of that? Okay.
Um, is that clear, sweetie? Do we have a motion, um, about to open a public hearing?
I move that the Select Board open a public hearing on the petition of National Grid to install underground PVC conduit to Nine Bennett Street.
Okay.
Um, a group is back there? Brian?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Kathy?
Yes.
And Jeff? Your show.
Hi all. My name is Nicholas Angelo. I am a design engineer with National Grid. Uh, my office location is at forty-four River Street in Beverly, Massachusetts. I'm here today to petition on behalf of a customer at Nine Bennett Street for conduit installation within the roadway of Bennett Street for their service, their requested service. We have an existing manhole on Center, on Bennett Street that they will be trenching to, uh, to provide service to a handhole on their property for their underground service.
Um, do you think the, the conditions that are, um, people are likely to have here?
Yes, yeah.
And do you look to care to meet his requirements?
Absolutely, yes.
Questions? I assume you don't know anything about the outage of Des Moines, Alabama?
Oh, no, no, I don't. No, now you're gonna ask me about the outage during to this one, but, but no, unfortunately, I don't.
Uh, I understand from the very reliable Facebook that we had a, a manhole cover that flew into the air. It was exciting. Okay. Oh... Mr. Clay?
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, he's gonna close, yeah. I've been up since four thirty, so he goes.
Just after, in a topic.
Oh, oh, wait, okay. I should ask, what was your point?
I'm not seeing the, the screen here, so.
Yeah. Move the Select Board close, you have an entry portion of the public hearing.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Brian?
Yes.
And I move that the Select Board approve National Grid's petition to install underground PVC conduit, um, you know, ninety-nine dash twenty to customer-owned handhole ninety-nine dash twenty-two in all appearances at Nine Bennett Street with the stipulations proposed by the Director of Public Works.
Second. Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
How do I say that? Okay.
Ultimately, hang this.
Yeah. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Oh, just by the way.
Yeah.
Um, really, sweetie, on your salutation on the letter to us, it says, "To the Board of Select Man, Manchester," and we are now on Select Board.
Hundred percent. My apologies on that one, I will make sure that is updated.
Nothing we're pickier.
No, don't worry, don't worry, I'll make sure that's updated, pretty much.
You may identify as anything you want, but we are on a Board of Select Man. That would make you, or be a judge.
So much people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. The, the next item on our agenda is the Cultural Council, uh, application from Linda Crosby. Linda, would you put into us why, after all of the years of service you've given to the town, you want to give more?
Well, ironically, I really am not familiar with this council. And I am on other boards and I've been so involved, as you know, in, over all the years that I was working in the school system and, you know, chair the school committee and then, you know, I'm on other boards, I'm on the museum board now and just very engaged in so much. And I was asked by this group if I would come on board because they would like me to help them promote what they're doing and I know so many people. And I, I was embarrassed to say that I really was not familiar with what they were doing. Now, reading up about it and attending an introductory meeting, they have grants that allow them to do so many wonderful projects, but I don't think that they're all well enough attended and publicized. And so, I don't know if I can make a contribution, but I'm, you know, willing to try.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, so, you know, I, here I am, I didn't realize I had to come. I didn't remember, I'm on the Downtown Improvement Project Board and I've been on that for quite a while. And, um, I've also been very engaged in the church. Steve Carhartt and I have started something called the Stephen Ministries, training people to go out into community and, and help people in urgent need. And I'm developing a resource directory all over the North Shore of helping agencies. So I think probably my connections are what they want from me because I certainly don't have a artistic, cultural set of credentials to offer.
Talk a little more. It's still not, it's very low, so, just project.
Oh, okay. Okay. Do you, Jeff, do you have any questions for Linda?
Uh, not really, just thank you for stepping up and, oh.
Even though I'm an old lady and you are my student and here I am still?
I won't all that again, yeah.
Did you, did you fail?
No.
Okay.
I think it was like a D-line.
A stellar student for, for sure.
Yeah.
And Anne and I have worked together.
School board, yeah.
School board and, you know, I feel like I, I've been involved in a lot of things, maybe I can contribute, I don't know. I'm not even sure what my term is, is, is it a one-year renewable or?
Two years.
What are you saying?
June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Two years, okay. Can you think of anything else I can tell you?
Oh, I was just going to say that we have a wonderful resource in Tiffany Marletta.
I know that, yeah.
And, and?
You think we're maybe not utilizing her enough?
I hate to suggest that anyone do anything more to make Tiffany's life difficult or even challenging, but, um, she's, as you get ideas of how to move things out, she is a resource that, um, should be available.
Okay. Well, Marion Powers has a major project planned that will involve the Rotunda and doing all kinds of creative art projects around it, not just at the Rotunda, but using that as the focus and that's gonna start the end of June and so we're all working on that and we'll come up with some new ideas, I'm sure and it'll be fun for me. So I appreciate your support.
No, I have no questions, I just think your network would be very helpful to that council, so thank you for agreeing to step forward.
Well, when I moved here fifty-five years ago, I thought, oh, we were newly married, we'd be bored in a few years and we'd move on, but I could never leave this town, so.
Okay, is?
I'm, I moved the board appointment to Crosby to the Cultural Council, her term expires on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven.
Second. Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Brian says yes.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. That was much easier than I thought it could have been. We try not to discourage volunteers very much.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you and I enjoyed hearing, seeing you all and, we're in your meeting.
I've got a few concerns about the volume of people's voices.
Okay.
So, we, they did try to turn it up a little bit from the council, but if, out in the hall, but if you could just remember to speak up, that'd be helpful.
All right. Now we get to the awkward part. Um, the people at Thirty-three Harbor Street are neighbors and friends and I, I would not, it would not be appropriate for me to be part of this discussion. So I am going to refuse myself, would somebody volunteer to take this, um, item on?
I'd be happy to. Okay. If, if anybody can hear me. So, um, Greg, the Reader's Digest version is that this, um, household received a larger-than-expected bill, but it seems to be an accurate bill? Is that correct?
Right, I don't think the accuracy is in question, it's, it's a dollar amount because they were surprised by the, um, by the new rates and the, and the different tiers that we had created last July.
Do we have the Hons here to discuss it or make a statement?
Yeah, I don't. Honestly, they're under a known name, a different name, I don't see their name listed here. It's disappeared. Did we hear from them?
No, but you, they were told that, yeah.
Yeah.
Put it on the next agenda.
So, um, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see their name here, so we may have to postpone this yet again.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we should give the homeowners an opportunity to take their case.
Yes.
If you guys are in agreement, we can postpone this to the next available meeting slot.
That's fine.
Yeah.
We'll try to confirm.
Okay, yeah.
Back it in.
Anne, we're done. Now, we just sent a mail, correct? About the rates and?
Um, there, there were mailers in the fall.
Okay.
And so the, other concern was that was after the fact, in terms of after use, that part of the concern.
I'll go get Anne.
Have you had any other complaints or?
There's been a few other phone calls, but people sort of accepted the explanations. This is the only formal request for, for an update.
Oh, matey.
We're fishing when Anne's not here. Okay.
Okay. The next is, item is to review and consider, I'm sorry, approval to join Cape Ann Transportation Authority to provide service to Manchester by the Sea.
So, this is something that you've been talking about for a while, um, a couple of meetings ago, you said, "Let's, let's proceed." Um, and your authority here from, from KADA, um, she can answer any questions about the process, but, uh, we do need a formal vote for you to officially request, um, permission to join the authority.
And then the service, um, the specifics of the service would be discussed after we formally request to join?
So, process and why don't you go through that for us, Felicity?
Yeah, the, the board, could you just, just for a vote, um, give your, give your name? You don't need to stand up.
All right, all right.
Uh, Felicia, last name is Webb, W-E-B-B. And I'm the administrator at KADA. So the process is you, you vote to join, the town notifies me, I arrange an advisory board meeting with my existing board, they vote to accept or reject, I'm gonna, I think you guys joining would be very exciting for the board, they would be looking forward to that. After that takes place, then I would work with the town, someone designated by the town to develop the actual service, days, hours, the amount of the local assessment that would be moving from Manchester or the MBTA line item over to the RTA line item, we finalize that and then once you're satisfied, once KADA is satisfied, then service would begin. And then somewhere along that process, after the advisory board votes, I notify Mass that Manchester has joined KADA.
So start to finish, is it a six-month process? Is it a?
It could be a six-month process. Um, Hamilton joined December of twenty nineteen, I believe we started their service July of twenty, so that was about six months.
About six, yeah.
I think it's a grand idea.
Yep.
Well, I've heard. I've had even public comment.
Yes, it did.
Yeah, everybody, I think it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, ready for a vote?
Yes.
The Select Board approve, interested by the Sea, join Cape Ann Transportation Authority and to have KADA develop the service proposal, the board to review and approve at a future meeting. Second.
First question?
Yes.
Jeff says yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes. Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, actually, one question.
Out of order.
Out of order. How long, uh, before you stop presenting plans to us? That's, uh...
Depending on, depending on the schedule.
If we're approved, oh, by the way, if we're approved.
If you guys are approved.
Mm-hmm.
Just depending on the schedule of when I sit down and talk to somebody from, from the town. Maybe a month.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't see it being overly complex service. It should be a month.
We do have a raised hand, MBTS, I'm not sure who that is.
Okay.
Oh, hi, it's Mary Bolley, wonderful last week. Drive. Um, just a question, I, it seems this must have been discussed at a meeting prior, but you're voting on something and, and could you let me and anyone else listening know what the actual details are, what are you looking for? Are you looking for daily service? What's the amount being moved from the MBTA budget, et cetera? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the, the basic concept is to, um, complement our current CLA vans with, with a similar on-demand service and, um, probably our budget that we're currently giving to the MBTA in the hundred and thirty thousand range would likely purchase up to three days' worth of service in that range. But again, those details are, are what will be finalized over the course of the next few months.
So just as a follow-up, if that gets transferred from the MBTA, then we no longer have to pay the MBTA? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is spending the, um, special event permit to include the harbor. Um, Greg, can you tell me what? He says the underlined language added here to include the harbor, but there are other things that are not underlined that seem to be additions, so, could you just? And there's, I assume that the, oh, the red paragraph is original except for the underlined part.
Correct, yes. So we're adding harbor waterways, waterways.
Yeah.
And then, um... But then, so he's not consistent, so then, uh, what is new is in, is now in red. The bullet points that are red are new.
Okay.
So that ready safety plan, safety days in advance, um, of the maximum number of attendees and vessels. So that is proposed to be new language. And then the other bullets as well, so the non-boat owner transportation plan should be something that would be added as a new, um, piece of information, establish safety channel for egress to and from the event, harbor detail, and then penalty for unpermitted event.
What is the penalty?
That was gonna be my question, what is the penalty?
Probably, um... Yeah, I'll have to, have to drill that down.
I guess my other question there too is, who do we, how do we decide who, who's running the event? If you have a ton of people out there.
So someone has to apply, right? Someone has to?
Well, I'm saying if someone against the rules, if nobody applied for a permit, you have a ton of people out there.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Who's, you know, who's responsible? Who are you, who are you gonna send this to?
Yeah, yeah.
I would also ask, uh, as far as a family event, is that like a birthday party? I think the original, that's all started as a birthday party, isn't it? I think the original, that's all started as a birthday party, isn't it? The classes. It started as a birthday party, wasn't it?
It was a...
Not a group. But would that be classified as a family event? Family and friends.
Any posting of a gathering on any social media platform? I don't know. Um... Kathy?
I thought we kind of walked through, kind of dig up my notes from the last time we, I mean, we had a big meeting on this. And I'm struggling to find my notes from that meeting, unfortunately.
One of the things that we asked for is what is an event? And I don't have a good idea from this language, what is an event? For example, the high school sailing team has races with other schools. Is that an event? It's almost certainly advertised on social media. How about the NSA? They use the harbor.
So I guess if we think about what's the outcome we're trying to achieve, it's safe water events, right? But also the event sponsors paying for the extra public safety details necessary to make it safe. So to me, the types of question, you know, there's gonna be some sort of a scope, either number of planned attendees or something of that nature.
We actually have to have a harbor detail every time NSA puts boats on the water.
Right. But do they pay for it?
Yeah.
So that's my point, is if we, is this policy intended to start charging event sponsors for the extra public safety personnel that are needed?
The operative word is extra.
Extra, yes.
All right. I mean, it's like anything else, like military flyovers, well, they're gonna train anyway. Okay? But if all of a sudden we have to bring in additional resources, I think that becomes a tipping point.
Right, but how do you know when you're...
Well...
Like the codboard?
Codboard boat race, we have the harbor master, Mike's out there all the time. He's gonna be there anyway, you know, I don't see that as...
But the event application, I think includes insurance and...
I don't want to discourage fighting water either.
Yeah.
Could we start slow, slowly, and then add if we find we...
You certainly can't, I mean, this is, it's easy to modify.
Find we didn't come enough, so specifically, I don't want commercial, you know, entities telling all their customers, you know, "Lollapalooza here at Manchester, not interested." They're gonna fill out the form. So maybe we start with, you know, commercial entities advertising, you know, on-water events. You know, maybe, can we start with that? Or is that too, you know, is that in some way discriminatory towards businesses?
Well, it would be outside the scope of what they normally do, right?
Yes, yeah. I don't know. So that's, to me, that's the headache that I definitely would like to prevent. And then these parties.
I think we gotta get a size down.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, if ten boats pull up for the afternoon and cook hot dogs in San Diego, but people don't need a permit, you know, but...
Yeah. I'm anxious to see that it doesn't involve sailing races, for example.
Yeah.
I've got a little thing about the codboard boats, too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I mean, stuff like that, yeah.
You know, so what, again, now it brings, it would come full circle, what is an event? We've seen, and where does, where does... The impetus inside this whole discussion, what is that? Is that an event?
What is the event we want to target, I guess is what...
Three hundred boats?
Well, like I said, personally, mine is the commercial ones. I don't believe we should be asked to handle those without those people for getting money.
So I wonder if you could start off with commercial events, and events that will bring in more than, pick a number, is it a hundred boats? Is it fifty boats?
Fifty, I think is more like it.
Well, I think that would be a good question to ask the harbor master, how many can you handle without extra resources, right? Because the point of this is to ask the event sponsor to pay for extra resources to keep it safe. I would ask Bayon, how many boats can you handle without the extra resources?
So what can you handle with what you have on the water daily?
Be careful with the number of boats, because a sailing regatta with five schools could easily have ten boats per school.
I still think it's a valid question to ask Bayon, though, because, you know, you may want somebody else to pay for it, but I think that the key issue is safety, and if he needs extra resources somehow because of exceeding a certain number of boats, I think that's a...
Yeah, I think the number is, what is the number that will strain your resources for what is normally a scheduled day? Okay.
Busy Saturday versus...
I mean, I would think also that, based on weather forecasts, he would staff accordingly. Right? So anticipating a busy day on the harbor. But then we don't want to also, you know, so maybe it brings in a couple of extra people. Then there's an event or something going on in Sandal that no one knew about or didn't know about that's gonna tie up, bring in, it's gonna call in extra.
And you're unprepared because...
I think the starting point, like you say, is we'll start with commercial and see how it goes for you.
Yeah, we can always come back.
Yeah, I think we'd like, given that this isn't going to happen in the next two months, I'd like, not just we say "commercial" and it goes, we'd like to see this again with the... Okay. The, do you approve the 26 Central Street easements?
So this is in regards to the Central Street culvert project. As you know, we've been dealing with one property owner in particular to make sure we have the necessary easements for the project to proceed. We don't need very much. The permanent easement is less than 20 square feet. Similar size for a temporary to in order to replace the, basically the support wall that is already there gets replaced with a new wall. So town council recommends the formal language as a motion to allow you to pursue requiring that temporary and permanent easement by filing the appropriate paperwork in the registry of deeds and paying damages recommended of $4,000.
Okay, I move pursuant to the provisions of GLC 83, section four, to acquire a permanent and a temporary easement on property located at 26 Central Street for drainage culvert purposes and to award damages in the amount of $4,000 for said taking and further to execute an order of taking, take said easement.
Second. Further discussion?
So proceeding with this, we will still continue to reach out to see if the property owner would like to enter into a broader agreement if this allows the project to continue to move forward.
Has there been any motion?
Uh, no, there's not.
What do you vote?
Yeah.
This week. Brian?
Yes.
Dan says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we do have a hand up.
Oh, okay, sorry. That is Mary Foley.
Is that Mary? Yeah.
Hi, Mary Foley, could you please explain what, let me see, an order of taking means?
So it means that the town is able to file the necessary paperwork to have access to that portion of the property.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not being very smart at this, but I still don't know what that means.
It means the town can have access to the property even if the property owner doesn't wish to grant that permission.
And how do you do that?
By this action.
Okay, so you can do that with any property in town?
For drainage purposes, yes.
For what?
For drainage purposes, you can have that authority.
Just drainage?
Well, the town has other authorities, but it will require different processes. Some of it requires town meeting votes, some of them don't, depending on what's involved.
Okay, do you have a law you can put me to, so I can look at that?
As mentioned in the motion, chapter 83, section four.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Just, we are still open to discussion also.
Yes, yeah, we can always entertain negotiations. Yeah, absolutely.
But this allows...
We've worked on it, we've been trying for that for the last year and a half, so...
But this allows DPW to start to...
Right, continues the permitting process and the bidding process with the contractors.
Then would that window close to...
It actually never closes, in essence. You can always, you can always go back. Nothing prevents that from happening.
We're not about to harm the owner, so that's why we'll leave it right, we'll leave it open in that regard.
Correct.
We just have a responsibility to the town.
This is a pretty major project. There's significant money on the line. It's an important project to do before it fails. Having that culvert fail would be...
But it was two years, that Central Street would have closed in two years.
Oh, at least, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's the rationale for it.
And the damage that it would cause. To many properties. So yes.
Big sinkhole.
Sarah, please, I'm sorry, Hannah.
Sarah, please.
Hi, yes, thank you. I just wanted to ask, what exactly is happening to the culvert? As far as, is it a structural? I know, Greg, you and I spoke the day of that big flood we had. I'm a little confused as to what this project is actually doing.
So the project removes the existing tide gate that is there, takes out the existing culvert, and puts in a larger concrete culvert with a stone face. And then rebuilds the retaining walls that are currently there on both the upstream and downstream sides, better railings, safety measures, et cetera.
How did you find out that it was...
Really?
...opprimized?
It's inspected by the state every other year, I believe it is. And they have listed it as a coast of failed culvert for the last eight years.
Wow, okay, no, I mean, I've lived here my whole life, and I just, it's been, to my knowledge, the same structure there.
Yes, same structure, the stonework underneath continues to drop out. Stones continue to fall out of it.
So will it change the water flow at all?
It'll expand the capacity of the culvert, so it'll be able to handle larger stormy day.
Larger storm, so like when it flooded behind the, excuse me, fire station in that area, that would help that situation to retain more water coming through there? Or it would easily flow through?
So it'll allow that water to drain faster and not back up so much by the fire station and further up Sawmill Brook at the school street crossing, et cetera.
Okay. Okay, and is there, how, when would that project start?
Our hope is to have it start this fall.
And do you know how long it would take?
Probably a six to nine month construction project.
Six to nine months, okay. And I just wondered, on a side note, I know we were talking about the culvert, but what happened with the rotunda? Was that ever repaired?
That is slated hopefully also next fall. We're going after funding this winter and spring.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Next. Item is an update on the provisional mooring program.
So the update is that all people on the waiting list were given information regarding the possibility of if they wanted to pursue having a mooring through the Manchester Marine. That's the old marine that's wanting to offer commercial moorings to voters. And so that notification process yielded, I want to say about 60 people who are interested. And so the first 12, so there are 12 moorings being offered. So the chronological water on the waiting list, of those 60, the first 12 are given that opportunity to sign up for that. I believe, from my understanding, is 10 of those first 12 said yes. And then Bayon then has moved to the next two on the list. I might, don't have the update on what those two have said. But that's the process that's been followed. So, I believe it's working as you had requested. Offer the first round.
Yeah, there will never be another round this large.
Correct.
Unless...
Most likely. Very unlikely there'd be a round this large.
The difference between what the town charges and what the lenders charge, in my opinion, a huge incentive, right, we appreciate it. And this is something that I think people are very careful about. Not suggesting that anybody who's now involved would cheat, but we don't want to have, really need to keep an eye on the difference between $8,000. Difference between eight thousand dollars.
But I think it is cheaper than a lot of slips. I mean, not a lot.
No. Well, they're, they're paying the maximum size boat that can fit on it, that's why, right? That's why it's so expensive.
I think they can, yeah, they can take.
But they could go a little higher, they go to forty-five.
Yeah.
They, they, but they are charging as the minute, the, the charge is equivalent to a thirty-five foot.
Right.
So.
Well, good that it's going well.
But your comment is absolutely correct, that it, we want to make sure that is, and it needs to be by law. It needs to be controlled by the harbor master. It needs to be made available equally, and everyone needs to know the price upfront. So those details are important.
So we should get, list an update every year of, of it?
Yes, yes. Certainly is appropriate.
And the names of the people who have those have to be made public?
Yes.
And?
Yeah. Yes. In fact, we were, by and our, we're talking about a, uh, so, so Brian, I'll back up, Brian has developed a, an access, a database through access software. Sort of a home, homegrown program that he put together. And there, there are a couple of commercial, uh, commercial grade, uh, app platforms that do similar work with a little more robust reporting. And so we've been looking into that last week. He's, he's got a recommendation to, um, move forward with one of those commercial products. I think would, that would help facilitate the reporting out of who's on the waiting list, the transactions every year, et cetera. He has all that in, in his database, it takes, it takes a little digging to get, get to it all. So, uh, so I think this would probably be a worthwhile investment.
Working into the budget?
Yeah, it's a thirty-five hundred dollar.
Yeah, right.
Cost, it's, it's, in the scheme, it's pretty, pretty minor.
You know what the name of it is?
Uh, Town Mooring, I think is what he told me. I'm pretty sure that's correct, if I'm wrong, I'll let you know, but I think that's what he told me.
Great. Um, next item is screening committee. Um, I had emailed from John saying that he was in favor of, of Eli Bowling and, uh, Kio of, or select from the select board and, um, Rob Beatty and Becky Jakes.
We each want to go around. Um, I was with, um, I, I have the same recommendations for Rob Beatty and Becky Jakes on the at-large. On the former select board, I, I agree that either Muffin or Tom ought to be on the screening committee because they've done this before. I, I lean towards Muffin though, because she brings that housing perspective that she talked, that we talked about. And, and that's how I'm just, I mentioned this last week, that's how I'm approaching this, is what is the unique, you know, skill set that somebody brings to the table? And she brings the housing aspect in my mind. And Eli, I think he had some very unique experience as the chair during the, his, his tenure and his comment around, um, the TA needing to educate the select board around the state and municipal laws and the relationship. He's the one that really talked about the relationships outside the town. That's what I thought was very unique about his, um, about his input. So I, I was leaning towards Muffin and Eli for the select board.
I really wish we could have three because that would be my dream team, but. Yeah, I like Tom and Eli. Becky, I like her, she has a lot to offer, but as being a former select board member and then being an at-large member, I don't know if I.
I share.
Yeah.
I, I share that as well. I kind of felt like we should have dealt with that last Thursday, a little bit.
Well, I didn't even know, I never even got her email or anything.
Yeah, the last, I think I heard was that she was.
She was, she was, right.
No, she sent email, it might have gone to your junk folders too, because she did send.
You did?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, she did.
Yeah, she did send it to all of us.
So maybe it is in my junk.
Could have been in the door.
Um, I kind of think it should be a resident in my mind.
Uh, so did you, I'm sorry, did you, did you have two on the resident side?
I like Gar and, um, what's the, uh?
Rob Beatty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, from the at-large, Rob Beatty, uh, okay, he's an awful lot. Tom, a lot of it. Uh, and I know we talked about, uh, former selectmen, but we also talked about, this is a, are we drafting for best available position? Or, uh, trying to fill a need? And I think that Becky, uh, with her experience, as her recent experience and what she's, knows what we're going, who have to face going forward, I would, as far as the at-large, I would go with, uh, uh, Becky and Rob with Dave Crean just right up, right there, you know? It's unfortunate that we, there were, there's, there's three at both ends that I wanted, okay? I want six. I think that, uh, Dave brings a lot of, uh, because the things that we have going forward would be a lot of infrastructure. And I think Dave would know how to ask a lot of those questions. So that's, you know.
Yeah, I can see that, and I can say that.
Actually, too, the, I like Gar too, his experience is outstanding. His documentation said he was not available for like a week during the whole process, so that's kind of why I didn't include him, I think. Because he is outstanding still.
So right now, I would say Becky and Rob Beatty. Uh, and then on the select board side, Muffin. And then I, then it's a toss-up between Lee Spence and, uh, Tom Keough. Uh, I've got, well, I had, I was all set, it was going to be Lee and Muffin. It goes to, and then Tom had to come in and mess up my, because I think he did a great job, uh, with his presentation, his understanding, his experience. The more I talk about this, I might be changing my mind. But, uh, so I got Muffin, you can put Muffin down, and, uh, Tom. Now that, actually, I've talked myself into it.
There's no, there's no bad pick.
There's no bad decision.
No, that was, it's all plug and play, that's the thing, everyone's plug and play. We're not giving up anything, there is no bad decision here, okay?
So what does Anne think? I like Muff for the, for the, Muffin and Eli. Muffin goes back a long way. Um, and she's just involved in the housing, which is important for them. And, um, Eli is a very good person to work with. And I think having him there would make it easier for the group to come to consensus. So, um, and, you know, he was, um, select for five years, I think, of the nine that he was on the board.
Not during the pandemic?
And during the pandemic, and dealing with, with, trying to figure out how to deal with remote meetings, which was, anyway. Um, for the, um, non-selectment, I think Becky has too much selectmen and that selectmen really covered. And I also, um, Rob Beatty, the odd question. And I think I would pick Gar if he weren't available.
Yeah, that, that.
The unavailable.
The unavailable bothered me, I just thought it was too much time to not be available.
He is, he represents a different part of town than everybody else, um, but if the, it's going to be hard to schedule.
Right.
The interviews.
Are we getting good resumes in, um, you know, I mean, is, team, once we pick people tonight, is our recruiter ready to kick the team off next week, or what, what's the plan here?
Yes, uh, probably the following week.
Okay.
Yes. And then have interviews, um, early, that first week of March.
Yeah, Gar said he wasn't available. To me, that was, that was my only reason for not selecting him. I heard consensus around Mr. Beatty for at-large.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And you've got, almost you're averaging us on Eli. Got three and three, Tom and Muffin. Did you vote for a second resident?
Um, I think, um, Ned.
David Crayton.
David Crayton.
David Crayton. Lee is great, but Lee and Muffin a certain amount of overlap in their point of view. Trying to get different.
Is it? What do you have for counts?
So, do we want to focus on one category?
Yeah.
So, for former select, select board members, uh, see, Eli's, Eli has four of the five votes. And then you have both Muffin and Tom having three each.
Would it hurt to have a tiebreaker? We have, right now, we have an even number, don't we?
Well, okay, there's a question about whether we count, um, John's votes. Because he's not present for this discussion. And?
Right.
Frankly, I gave you, gave you that information as, you know, background, but I don't think with somebody who's not here.
Technically, technically, he can vote.
Technically, he cannot vote.
He cannot.
Okay. So then what is the count then?
So then you have three, three for Muffin, two for, two for Tom.
I think, I, I do feel Muffin, her perspective on the housing, um, her, 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 and the fact that she hired Greg.
Well, Tom did too, right?
And Tom did too. But, but the housing piece is why I lean towards Muffin, because Tom, outstanding, right? We've kind of got this, I mean, he's got the schools experience, but we kind of got that covered, right, with Chris Reed. Um, and I just think that she brings something unique that, that we won't have any representation on that subject, um, that I can think of.
But she's passionate about the housing.
Well, yeah. And she's on nonprofit boards, you know, working, you know, ancillary issues as well. I just, if she's not on the board, then who, who covers that topic area? That, that's my concern, because we, we don't know what we're doing there yet. We, we haven't got a good solution, and the next TA has got to come in here and, and help us with that. It's not just about the infrastructure projects, it's about what do we do with the land we have? And, and so I, I think she could ask some pretty good questions and hopefully get someone to check that box too.
So it's Rob and?
Oh, sorry, just on a side note, so, so Muffin, so Muffin and Eli.
Muffin and Eli.
And then for the other two, we got Rob Beatty and then, uh, two for, for Becky, one for Gar, one for, for David.
I'll change my, uh, to, uh, Dave.
I don't have a two-two tie. Two, two for Becky, two for, two for David.
You did, thanks a lot. Didn't repeat more problems than I recall.
I'll just go home now.
No.
Yeah. Dave? Rob is also, has not been much involved in the county. Dave has been here for a long time and it's been, I think, a decade or more since he's been on a town committee. And as you point out, yeah, we've.
We've got the select board members covered, okay? I will, I will change my vote and, and, uh, go with Rob and David.
I put everyone over the top.
Yep.
So it's Rob and Dave Crean?
So, so David Crean and Rob Beatty, Eli Bowling, and Muffin Driscoll.
I move the select board appoint Rob Beatty and Dave Crean as at-large members to town administrative screening.
Second. Further discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Answers yes, Kathy yes, and Jeff?
Yes. Move that the select board appoint Eli Bowling, Margaret Driscoll, as past select board members to the town administrator screening.
Second. Jeff?
Yes.
Kathy answers yes, Brian, okay. Fine.
Thank you. Not easy, but you have such good candidates.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all the consent agenda, are there any, I guess we do, we need to all update next. Jeff?
Hello?
Yes, I don't have any.
At this point, I know that, uh, the Fourth of July Committee, Final Pax and Rec had their first meeting last week. I'll remember, there are two new members on the, like, now that works out.
Who are they?
Uh, Sean Zahn, that was a bullhorn, so I, I could see him at the starting line. And, uh, who was, I forget. I forget, uh, she, she, uh, applied for a job, uh, for a position on the Pax and Rec. She's an event coordinator.
Okay, I can remember.
Okay.
Yes.
So, uh, she was trapped, so, and she, uh, you're going to get started. I don't know if they realize they're going to get started this early, but Fourth of July is.
Only weeks away.
So does that get rid of the snow in the streets?
The school committee is having a public hearing on their budget of at Essex, starting at seven o'clock tomorrow night. Um, we have three candidate budgets. One proposing increase of more than nine percent, um, which maintains, uh, level services, that is, they're not eliminating programs, they're not eliminating project, both major positions. Um, and I have forgotten. At one point, they were considering saying, well, we think the twenty-four percent increase in health insurance is too much, so we're going to pretend it's fifteen percent and work from there to develop a budget. I hope they have cleaned that up, but I'm not sure.
And they actually had it down to ten percent.
Yeah. I, I, a million dollars of magic is a little scary. Um, the, um, next budget that they proposed includes, um, significant reductions, eliminating the middle school principal and eliminating the facilities director. I have spent a long time in the school, the school funding. And the place that they achieved is on facilities maintenance. I hate to see the manager go. That's a person who is, it's not somebody who's focused on, I'm going to go on, somebody who.
Building.
Yes. I have a middle school principal. There's a retirement, so it's not let somebody go. On the other hand, we all have a number of letters from our parents of middle school students who feel that the attention that a principal feels. And I think there's also a 2.5% increase question, and I don't know anything. It should be very interesting part.
Hmm. Yeah, the, uh, Val read the emails.
Yeah.
Everyone wants the 9% increase. I'll have Manchester with press.
And I have a question. A couple of years ago.
Oh, yeah.
They were, the school committee was supposed to have a strategic planning session to, they keep saying that there's, there are structural changes that need to be made in order to budget differently and really address the structural issues with the budget. Today, if I have that session, I, I can find out evidence that they didn't. That's kind of what, that's what I'm concerned about because without, you know, structurally looking at the organization and the budget in a, in that way, then all you do is until you can't cut anymore and, and you wind up with the proposals we have in front of us. So I just feel it was a missed opportunity for the school department, excuse me, the, the school committee and, um, and the administration to really take a look at some of those structural changes. We're living with the results.
Jeff, what is Essex looking at?
Like for a three and a half. So what you got, what'd you get, three and a half?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, they're going, I mean, as far as healthcare and all that.
We hit that a few years ago, but yeah, that'll be coming again at some point.
It'll be a long. Popularity draw from them. As far as the overall budget goes, right?
Problem with our budget is we get a lot of grants that regular schools don't get. We get, we raise a lot of money, like we raised five million this year. So our budgets, tech school budget's a little bit different from, even though it's still a regional school. We have a few more opportunities to pick up money than just regular school system. And because we have towns that are part of our district that aren't as wealthy as Manchester, so that helps our chapter 70 and stuff like that.
So if we were to change it from that to put the word tech into the, Manchester Essex Regional School Tech District.
Yeah, yeah, if you move the town somewhere else, you might be onto something. But, um, yeah, everybody goes through it.
We've been watching, we've known this, it's going to happen and.
It's going to happen.
It's, uh, well, it's not going to get better, it's going to get worse.
But last week's finance committee meeting where the school committee was at, administration, they did talk about inviting a multi-year number crunching exercise. Now, I don't know exactly what that'll entail.
And they said the same thing last year in the U of C.
I thought you held into the meeting of the financial committee. And, um, Michelle has a spreadsheet that goes out five or six, six or six years at least. But it just assumes approximately the same increase line by line and surprise, surprise, the results come out.
Not what they discussed.
It should be an audit.
Okay, the, the, the.
Desi, I know does audits, but I mean, really should have a third party come in and.
Well, I mean, they, they do a financial audit every year.
Well, the, I think the audits that are done though are more around compliance to, the compliance audit's not, is this the best way to run a school? What are some other ideas? Like the operational audit, we, I hope to get it from our team. When is that coming, by the way?
Should be Wednesday. Should be Wednesday.
Um, so that type of operational audit is what the school committee, what the school system, excuse me, needs, needs to do. And I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, the results of our operational audit might be an example of what they could do. Because the Desi stuff is more focused on quality, is what could you do if you had a blank check as opposed to?
I mean, they get into the financial end of it. But here, they approve your budget too, so. I mean, at this point, another set of eyes.
Would be beneficial.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I.
Yeah. Well, I won't be around tomorrow night. Y'all have a really cool meeting. I'm going to move that the board approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
For the discussion? Brian?
Good, yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. How's finishing?
Okay, so kick off with just a few highlights from last week's MMA Connect 351, the new name, annual meeting. 351 communities in Massachusetts, so that's where the Connect 351 comes from. It's held at the convention center in Seaport, a different venue. That venue is a little large for.
Freezing.
Yes, it was chilly out there. Yeah, I think, I think, I think a few lessons learned, they need to consolidate it in one section, so rather have to walk a block or two just to get to a workshop, I think that could be a little, little better. But nonetheless, still a lot of good information. John and Kathy were both there for at least part of it. And the trade show is always interesting. We talk to different vendors and, and hear different, see different products. I know that Will Charlie and Kathy connected with.
Yes, we've got some, whenever I go to one of these things, I always try to get something for free. And we got some interesting information on short-term rentals. So I went up to one of the vendors and I said, supposedly, we have three. And how many did they come up with?
Well, so conservatively, one came up with 40 some odd.
Yeah, yeah, 40-ish. So basically, they, they have this software that, you know, scrapes multiple websites to identify people that have short-term rentals and that type. When we discuss that topic next week, at our next meeting, one of the things we'll, we'll want to think about is not just what the policy should be, but how we want to, what do we want to enforce, right? And how do we want to enforce? And then you may need some type of tool to help with that. That was very interesting. What else did you find interesting, Greg? I found a couple other things that were cool.
Yeah, this, this, they had this, their whole EV alley this year, which was new, different vehicles, the cruise cruisers, buses, and utility trucks that were all, all electric, so they're, they're coming. So I think that, that's encouraging. The, you know, there's keynote speakers I think are always worthwhile and good to hear. And we had the governor and lieutenant governor both give presentations. Some of the new legislation that'll be filed, they will be refiling. In fact, they did just this past Friday what they're calling municipal empowerment act 2.0. So that was filed last year, didn't go anywhere. It's designed to give municipalities a few more tools in the toolbox in terms of revenue options, taxing abilities that we currently don't have. For example, real estate transfer tax, which could be very helpful in funding affordable housing.
The other thing I'm keeping my eye on was the, uh, part of that bill is the automated speeding enforcement.
Yes.
That was very interesting that they put that in their bill, not to be a criminal penalty, but just a civil penalty. So it wouldn't cause anybody's insurance to go up, et cetera. But there's renewed energy around that because they recognize the towns need help, you know, being able to enforce speeded, and it, you know, the software provider that does it is right at Beverly. And it's the same type of business model as safety sticks we have, you know? Something to keep our eye on to help.
I'm curious that I heard that, I read this in the Boston Globe. Well, I think I read that you're allowed one camera per 5,000 people.
Yes, that is the current language.
So you put one and try it out in a bad spot and see where it goes.
I think down, way down towards Magnolia.
This is where, this, this state takes baby steps, you know, in, in order to get people comfortable with things and, and, you know, other states do it and it works just fine.
The town did receive an award from Maya for our wellness programming, so hats off to both Jen Yaskel and Cheryl Marshall, who had that up for us. So that was nice to, to receive. It was disappointing news, the health insurance rates, so Maya announces their rate rates at the annual meeting. So the average will be just, just shy of 15% for an increase. At the high end, it could be as high as 20%, at the low end, 10%. So my preliminary budget had a 10% increase. We will, we will know our number, we'll be following that 10 to 20 range in another two weeks. I'm expecting it to be closer to 15 than 10.
You're pat on the back, nice job here.
It's, uh, yeah, it's a combination of lots of factors. Utilization is, is up across the board, that's sort of nationwide, so the national trend is about a 10% increase. So you put on top of that higher utilization, and you put on top of that some very expensive new drugs, these weight loss drugs, for example, are very expensive and very popular. And Medicare's and Medicaid are paying less to the hospitals, so hospitals are pushing hard to get insurance companies to pay them more. So they're putting real pressure on the Blue Crosses of the world to, to renegotiate contracts and pay them more. So not only is it disappointing for this coming year, but they were, everyone was saying, be prepared for this for the next three years.
We, we got to get serious about trying these HSAs and maybe cooperating with the schools, you know, is there an opportunity for us to partner with the school district and Essex, the town, around implementing some of these HSAs, even if, you know, it's not for the unions yet, just for the non-using personnel, we might have economies of scale that could still help us, but we've, we've got to get serious about this.
Yeah, we, we do have an H, a high delightful product, we only have two or three people touching it at this point.
We got to really help them understand.
Yep.
What is the downside of?
Change, honestly. I, I wish I had had it, you know, my company offered it earlier. But it's especially good for, for folks who are younger. It's like having a 401K for your health.
That's what people don't understand, so.
Low is your taxes, it's, it's.
That's what people have a hard time grasping.
Yeah, they just don't understand. It's going to be explained to them in a way that's, that helps them understand, but we, most people get it.
What about somebody who has, who's older, who has medical issues? What, oh, there's no problem.
Well, so you want, you want, your, your bank account, your, your future won't grow. If you're, if you're, if you're having to spend on that deduction.
But you can, you can contribute to it all the way up until the time you get Medicare, you're on Medicare, you, so, you know, even though I'm not working anymore, I still contribute and I, you know, I can until I hit 65 or whatever. Helps on. People got to, we, we got to find an easy way to explain, because like I said, especially for the young folks, they, they can build an account to help them with their future health costs.
They can build, they can build equity in that.
Oh, my God, yeah. This is, there was a program where, it still exists, where you contribute, but at the end of the year, it all goes away. No, that's different.
So those are flex spending accounts.
That's flex spending, yeah.
Yeah, so that differs from the health savings account.
Right, this really is like a 401K for health plan, but you could use it to pay premiums, your copays, your doctor bills, you can use it for whatever. You don't, you don't have to wait until you're a certain age to use it. You put money in, you can use it the same year. You know, so it's always available to you, but it really helps at tax time and, and like it allows, if you're healthy and your family's healthy, you can just grow a nice pot of money tax free and stuff.
So that was MMA, I think, well. Those folks, I think, know, the community center, the old community center at Harbor's Point, they are moving in a different direction, leasing it out to a local company, so. We still have a conversation potentially about the public restrooms, but certainly not the rest of the building.
Well, can we put like, like take an action to make a decision about where the public bathrooms are going to be this summer? We, we've been talking about it and I'd like us to, if for some reason we can't work something out on the community center, then talk to, you know, whether it's the historical museum or, you know, one of the restaurants. We've got to have a decision and, and do something.
Well, is that Bravo stepped up, didn't they?
I thought they were going to, but then, you know, I don't know if anybody talked to them, but I just think we got to do something. So I'd love for this community center thing to work out, but I don't want to put all our eggs in one basket. I'd rather be working.
Well, then I'm not, you know, the, uh, the question is on the community center, is a private entity that's going to be occupying that, and they're going to want people wandering it out, or do we, do we ask to add to the side of the building? And I can tell you right now, one of the principals of Harbor's Point would rather, if you're talking building public restrooms, he doesn't think that's the place to put it, he thinks it should be over at the park.
All I'm saying is, do we need to put something in the budget? Do we not need to put something in the budget? I'm not clear. Any actions being taken, but we've got to have the public.
What about the Mason's?
Too far away, isn't it?
I mean, we got that trail, it's not, it's really, if you're like capian savings, it's right through that little trail. It's not far at all. It's really no farther than walking from there to Reed Park.
Something, it's something to explore.
I mean, I'm not saying it's a forever thing, but.
Yeah, honestly, something is better than nothing.
Right.
And I just feel like we're putting all our eggs in one basket. I'd rather we work parallel paths and see who wins the race, you know? Let's, let's, let's.
It seems like if you walk through there.
I walk, I walk.
Yeah, I mean, it's right there. It's really not that far.
No, it's, it's a, it's a great shortcut.
If we can use Bravo without having to build any, that seems like the best.
Yeah, if we can make that work.
If we can make some accommodation with them, so that, let's, let's just let, make sure we do something.
No, no, I think that, I think the, the.
They just wanted something about the water.
They wanted a basement of the water. I don't know if you ever did anything like that. She's so flighty though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can, I can make the, I can ask. She's, she's in Florida for next week or two. We can get some answers before the summer happens.
If we wanted to put anything in the Mason's building, that would be construction and.
So we need a, we need a now solution, and then there may be a better long-term solution we can keep talking about, but I think we need a now solution.
Two porta potty stacks of a year at Reed Park.
They do, they do make these like, uh, CMF.
We had that high end, the first year, the first year that the secret passage was. The first year, the first year that the secret passage was, uh, it was, that was nicer than any bathroom I'd seen.
One of those, yeah, it was the nicer trailers.
Yeah. And we could maybe park that, something.
Then they had, oh, they had the real fancy ones at the trade show, you should see. There was like a small house, like $250,000 for a public bathroom that cleans itself, you know? I was like, whoa.
Put it right back where we had it before. We could do that.
Yeah, something.
And that's right on the, it's on the secret passage. No one knows about. So it's a hundred. To us, the hydroic. Right, the wayfairing, oh, never mind.
It's near term and long term.
Now, now you mention it, I remember it, that was a really, really, really nice bathroom, look nice to mine.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, so the operations audit, I hope to have the draft two on Monday. Stay tuned for that. And then we would have, you know, after you had a chance to read over any comments, some potential edits. And then we would have Bill come in and give a presentation, probably that first meeting in, in March. The, um, the fire at the 109 Summer Street. Very good response and excellent hard work, prevented it from spreading, kept it to the, to the garage. So a, a really good effort for, um, all public safety, DPW helping out, our mutual aid partners coming in. It was a, an excellent effort all around.
Managing control of that many people, of that many organizations is really remarkable.
So yeah, everyone, everyone knew what they were to do and they did it. So that, that was a good example of things working well.
Like a little driveway.
Yeah, not very long driveway. Quite, quite like the hose they had to run.
Yeah. I saw it on the street next morning, like, oh, these guys have their hands.
So. Mason building discussions, we're getting closer, I think, to finalizing the PNS. Hope to move that along this week. Noise ordinance, uh, we, Anne, I think you've mentioned this about wanting to update, perhaps modify, the current noise ordinance. The current noise ordinance says major construction has to wait till eight AM. For a project like CST, that they would prefer an earlier start. The planning board recommended that as part of their permit, that they don't, they can't override a, the general bylaw that we have.
The planning board recommended that we.
Grant an earlier start, yes.
What, how much early?
So the target's set.
Most constructions, uh, in the city starts at six, but outside the city at seven o'clock. And that also would alleviate traffic, school traffic during the, uh, privacy impact on school traffic.
Well, that was part of the rationale. Planning board noted that they would like to avoid that conflict of school buses and the parents driving, kids driving to the schools.
So at seven to two, they're out.
But they're gonna be running hammers on excavators and stuff like, I mean, I got, I'm a little worried about the people across the way. Is there gonna be an issue there or?
They will have some concerns.
I mean, starting at sevens, I mean, I, believe me, I get that, but.
Monday through Friday anyway.
Right, but, I mean, if you got a hammer on an excavator running at seven in the morning, that's a little different than. I know, but it ca- it does carry through there, because I drive through there every morning. Change my route to work. So, uh, you know, regular construction, I don't see any problem, but.
So we're talking the first, what, six, three months?
The bylaws specifically talked about heavy, heavy duty construction, construction, heavy duty noise from there. But does it prohibit you getting started? It would prohibit the hammering from starting at seven.
Does that mean what? Not at nine, eight, what is that?
An ability to compromise here and do 7:30?
Well, I mean, they can start work, they just can't start hammering.
Yeah, they can, you know, they can come in, have their coffee set up.
Beyond that, the penalty is a hundred dollars a day.
So they'll probably start at seven anyway, the fit penalty.
Hold that into the cost.
I just wanna be conscious of. People on mill street.
Headphones, buy them all, bows.
And last item, Sarah Pierce has her hand up, let me just do my last item here, uh, which is Nielsen Street. So Chuck has been working with our, uh, engineering firms and they do feel that that hundred thousand that we have currently in the capital plan would, would be an excellent, uh, effort and get sufficient information to have good conversations. We continue to try to see additional grant opportunities to see if we can supplement that with additional outreach and participation. So those, those two updates. So that's, that's what I had, and as I say, Sarah has her hand up.
Hi, thank you. I just got another question. I heard you mention the PNS for the Masonic Lodge. And just wondered where things stood. Obviously you can't proceed with doing anything inside of there until that is signed. But are you still planning on sharing that space for a senior center and any timeline as far as once the PNS is signed? When that would take place?
So construction, um, in terms of addition and renovating the space, probably the earliest that that could take place would be potentially the fall. More realistically, it's probably a year away. So in the interim, there would be an ability to, to use the existing space as it is for different community activities.
So once you sign the PNS, I, I, from what I understood from the meeting, I thought there needed to be some other funds raised? But is that not, or maybe I misunderstood that?
For, for the construction, yes. I mean, though, the, the board has, uh, had some preliminary discussions about going ahead and having the town approve the, uh, the necessary bond and with the anticipation that the bond would be paid back through fundraised dollars.
So is that something that would be on the spring town meeting or?
Yes, correct.
Okay. No, I just wanted, people have asked me about the senior center and what, I mean, I don't know what the plans are, they're not clear or anywhere, so I just wanted to check in on that. One other item, I just, while we're on the topics of what you're discussing, I personally would think it would be a better idea not to put bathrooms in Reed Park for a variety of reasons. What about something that's more like in the area of the hardware store? Could something be added on to that building that's pretty centrally located and not waterfront? Because that, those bathrooms can tend to be, if they're not well kept up, kind of not what you want in a park. Just a thought.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Yeah, the, the challenge is what, what is public land versus private and what, what kind of deals can be made with a private landowner?
Yeah, okay, just a thought, thank you.
Do we need a, an executive?
I'm sorry?
It's on the agenda, do we need an executive session?
No, no. Not unless you wanna have further discussion, but no, I, I don't feel the need.
And I move to adjourn.
Ryan.
Yes.
Yes, that drops us.
Yes.